The pledge of allegiance tonight will be led by Councilmember Minchaka.
Please stand, face the flag, ready, begin.
Thank you. Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Harrington.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wu.
Here.
Councilmember Chan.
Here.
Councilmember Ding.
Yeah.
Councilmember Minchaka.
Here.
Thank you. Closed session report. Our city attorney will now give a closed session report from the special meeting heard earlier this evening.
Thank you, honorable mayor, councilmembers. One item was considered by the council in closed session. It was anticipated litigation, and unanimously, the city council authorized the city to move forward with filing of a complaint.
Thank you. We'll now have some announcements from our chief city clerk.
Tonight's meeting is livestreamed on the city's online platforms. If you wish to address the city council during tonight's meeting, we request that you please complete a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk. When speaking, please state your name for the record. If you wish to receive city council agendas, please sign up on the city's website.
Thank you. Next is the approval of the agenda order. Are there any objections to the agenda order? Staff has one comment.
Staff has requested that item four E be pulled from tonight's agenda to be considered at a future meeting.
Thank you. Any council or public? All right, seeing no objection, we will remove item four E.
Do you need a motion, mayor, for that?
Yes, I'm saying we'll, yeah, we'll take him, but make sure that includes removing four E, the motion.
Okay. I motion.
All right, we have one motion. Do we have a second? All right, we have a motion by Councilwoman Minchaka, second by Councilwoman Ding. Please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of five-zero.
Thank you. Next item, please.
We have no presentations. The next item is public comment. This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. If you wish to address the council, please fill out a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk. We do have a comment that was submitted by email. I beg your pardon, mayor, that was for item seven A. We have no general comment from email, but we do have a speaker. That is Andrew.
Thank you. Good evening, city council. I just want to make a general comment on the Lunar Festival we had over the weekend. I talked to Tony Ding a little bit about it, and I spoke to some of the presenters and Rebecca. When we have presenters that are going to be here and they're going to speak a language other than English, it would be nice if we could get people who could interpret what they're saying, because they were up there speaking, and I was like, hey, what are they saying? I was lucky a couple of times people were telling me, and sometimes they were talking about, you know, what they were doing, the culture of what they were presenting to us, and if they don't do it in English, some of us, like myself, who don't speak some, you know, another language, you know, other than, I speak English and Spanish, it's kind of hard, you know, it's kind of, we kind of missed, we kind of missed the whole gist of the, of the presentation. Then the other thing I just want to say is Saturday is the start of early voting, so we here in the city have two voting places, the library on Del Mar and Roosevelt Elementary School, so get out and vote. And then outside of here, we, they have the Rosebead Recreational Center right behind the LA County Library on Muscatel. There's voting there, and then also at the YMCA in Alhambra, and not sure what the address is there. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other members of the public that would like to address council? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Next item, please.
Consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine, and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the city council or public requests separate discussion. We have not received a request from the public to pull an item.
Thank you. Do we have any motions to approve consent as amended?
I'll move to approve unless one of the councilmembers want to pull something. Yep, just the consent. I move to approve the full consent agenda without.
Item E. Without a item. Got, got you. So we have a motion by Councilman Minchaka.
I'd say good.
Second by Vice Mayor Wu. Please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of five-zero.
Thank you much. Next item, please.
Public hearing. Zone tax amendment to update the San Gabriel municipal code relating to new state law that would allow medicinal cannabis delivery only retailers in the M-one zone.
Do we have a presenter on this, or? Okay, I'll open the public hearing, let's bring up our presenter.
Planning manager Samantha Twassart will make the step, presentation. Yes, good evening, mayor, and members of the city council. Staff's presentation this evening will be relatively brief. Again, this item is a zone tax amendment, ZTA twenty-three dash zero-zero-four relating to medicinal cannabis delivery only retail in the M-one light manufacturing zone. This is a continued public hearing item from the February sixth city council meeting. That was just the prior meeting, and at that meeting, background information was provided to the city council as well as information on Senate Bill eleven-eighty-six, the Medicinal Cannabis Patients' Right of Access Act, and the proposed regulations to be added to Chapter one-five-three zoning code, Title fourteen, land usage, subchapter cannabis prohibition and personal cultivation regulations in response to Senate Bill eleven-eighty-six. The city council discussed several items at that meeting and requested that staff return with proposed language specifically addressing four items, including providing security cameras in the parking area, whether signage can be restricted, adding an annual review fee, and whether delivery must occur at a physical address. Staff in working with the city attorney's office, those items have been addressed in the proposed ordinance that is provided as attachment C this evening. Staff has added language regarding requiring security cameras in the parking area, as well as signage will be limited to the address identification number, direction, any emergency signage that's required by law. Staff will also formulate an annual review fee for the retailer permit, and this will be presented when fee updates are presented to the city council, and also regulations have been included to address that delivery must occur at a legal physical property address. And so with that, staff is recommending that the city council conduct a public hearing and discuss proposed ordinance number seven-oh-two, waive the full reading, and introduce ordinance number seven-oh-two by title only, and that is an ordinance of the city council of the city of San Gabriel, California, amending Chapter one-fifty-three zoning code of the San Gabriel municipal code relating to medicinal cannabis delivery only retailers in the M-one light manufacturing zone, subject to a conditional use permit, waive future reading of the ordinance, and schedule the second reading and adoption of the ordinance for the next regular city council meeting, and the ordinance will become effective thirty days after adoption, and this concludes staff's presentation.
All right, thank you, Samantha. Does any council member have any factual questions or clarifications? Senator Minchaka.
Samantha, I'm sorry, I have a quick question. So you said that the fee schedule will come up when we present the, the fee for this particular zoning would be presented with the full fee schedule, but what if we have retailers who want to move in now or right after we approve this, or not approve, I guess, but what happens to them? I mean, they should know what the fee is going to be, so are we going to try to do that fee portion before we do the fee schedule?
If it's the direction of the city council to bring something back sooner than that, then that's something that staff can work on. It's just that additional time is needed to assess the time that's going to be spent on an application.
No, that part I understood, but when you said, you know, it's going to be brought back with the full fee schedule.
That was the intent. It's just not a part of this ordinance and this proposal.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just concerned that, you know, we have somebody move in and there's no fee schedule, and so, do we have any applications right now?
No.
Okay, so maybe we could just monitor it, and if there is a tenant, a possible tenant, then we should maybe expedite it or somehow notify them that there could be a fee schedule, or there will be a fee schedule, we just don't know what it's going to look like. And it can come back as an individual item, too, correct, city manager?
Thank you, Councilwoman Minchaka, and members of the council. Yes, it could come back as a separate item, but just the way the timing will work out, by the time we have the second reading and then the thirty days after that, that's going to dovetail very closely with when we're going to bring our fee schedule back in April anyway, so I don't, April or early May, so I don't anticipate we're going to have any concern about somebody coming in in that interim period.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That was all, mayor.
Thank you. Any other council members have clarification?
Based on the fee, so the fees, additional is a city charge, so they still need to pay the, the, the sales tax, special, the sales tax, or it's a regular sales tax or a special.
Oh, that would also be a part of staff's evaluation, so we'll be taking a look at all of that to be presented at the time of the fee schedule proposal. Any taxing information.
Yeah, not a regular sales tax. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for clarification? John?
Thank you, Vice, thank you, mayor. Thank you, Samantha, and on page five, this is just the definition, right, because there's like a definition of authorized grower cannabis, so those are just the definition. There's nothing to do with the resolution itself.
That's correct, and without underlying that's existing code, that's in the city's code.
I see, and also on the page eight, item E, except as provided in one-fifty-three-point-five-one-nine, old cultivation of cannabis expressly prohibited in old zones in the city of San Gabriel. And so far, when I go to the page fourteen, and that described that how the one-fifty-three-five-one-nine, that is showing that we have at least fourteen that telling us that actually we are, we are allowed the individual as. that actually, we are, we are allowed, the individual, as an authorized grower. Do they need to get a permit for that? Because it seems like they have the limitation about the size where they can grow the cannibes. Is that something to do with the ordinance right now?
No, that's also existing regulation. That's in the code.
Okay. And they will need to get a COP. And that, the permits, or we call license, that will be only good for one year for them. And they have to renew 60 days before it expires. So if they fail to do that, so they will need to reapply. And does the reapply process will be the same as the first time they apply? So they will go through a public hearing again and everything?
Yes, once there's an expiration, it's treated as a brand-new application.
I see. Okay, and the last thing here, on the page 10, number six, the City Council made by resolution establish minimum threshold qualifications for all municipal cannabis delivery only something. So is that minimum threshold qualification, including the fee schedule?
Which paragraph?
It's on the number six.
Okay.
So we are able to establish the minimum threshold qualification. So who qualifies to run the business? Just the first, first sentence, number six.
The question is, what does Section 6 provide for?
Yes.
It allows the council to set minimum standards for somebody who is in that business through resolution. So you don't have to amend the ordinance. You can adopt a resolution that will say, in order to do this delivery or be in this business, you have to be over 21, you have to live here or not live here. You have the ability to set minimum standards.
So far, we have the standard.
So to put it in layman's terms, we don't have to have a hearing to change these rules.
I see.
We can do it by resolution.
I got it. Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
Transiting from legalese. All right, any further questions? I have none, so we will open the public comments section. Do we have any public comments on this item?
I have no speaker cards.
Anybody in the audience that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Assuming we have no further, do we have questions from council? Above and beyond, we've already given? Okay, I will now close the public hearing. It's time for deliberation and discussion. Anyone that has any deliberation? We had plenty of deliberation last time. Is any new?
Nothing new. I'm happy with the staff putting, putting in place the recommendations from last time. And I'm happy with the way it's stated as it is now.
I'm happy, too, and I'll move to approve staff recommendation. Do I need to read each one because it's a public hearing? Okay, so I move to approve the staff recommendation.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Chaka, a second by Councilmember Chan. Please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of five zero.
Thank you. Next item, please.
We have no continued business. Our next item is new business. Item A, presentation of the All Are Welcome Program, and adoption of Resolution Number 24-05 for a budget increase of $1,500. Community Services Manager Matthew Morella-Stevens will make the presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Tonight, before you, we have the All Are Welcome Program. So we'll be outlining kind of what, how that came about, and all of the details should council decide to approve the program moving forward, as well as the budget of 1,500 in order to implement the program. So just some brief history on the program. The Committee of Here Commission members began developing a safe zone or space campaign upon the approval of their 2023 annual work plan on April 18th, 2023. And then at the June 27th, 2023, Here Commission meeting, the commission approved the All Are Welcome Program for submission to City Council for approval. Through their development, they determined that the purpose would be specific and broad all at the same time. So you can see that they're targeting a very specific subset, but they really wanted to be sure that they are inclusive of all, both organizations, whether they're a nonprofit community group, or a for-profit business within the city, within this purpose statement. So the purpose statement reads as follows: To identify inclusive and welcoming businesses in areas within the city of San Gabriel where people can feel comfortable being their authentic selves, regardless of their sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression. The organization, business, or area is also expected to be free of aggression, judgment, and hate. And really, what the area is supposed to be alluding to is, for example, if someone has a cubicle in an office environment that they want to put the All Are Welcome symbol on, they're welcome to do so, so they can make that decision on their own without the broader organization having to make the buy-in to the program as well. The enrollment process would be fairly straightforward. It is geared towards to be an opt-in program, so where they would do an online registration form that would be readily available on the city website. The city website, before they enroll in it, would provide all of the information that they need to know, including kind of some, an FAQ portion. Once the staff received the interest form into the office, they will be emailed a plethora of different resources to them, including the Safe Zone, or excuse me, the All Are Welcome Program logo, along with a video that what, what the program means. So it'll be a small description from the Here Commission, and then an introduction to what it means to be an ally and support the LGBTQ community, and create a safe and open and inclusive space. And that would be tentatively provided by the LGBTQ+ Center of the San Gabriel Valley. They've already agreed to do it, should council decide to move forward. They do have extensive experience in providing this type of information to the public in a very palatable manner. So we anticipate that it would be well-received by the public. And then finally, the participating organizations would continue to foster an inclusive and welcoming space within their business, once they put the placard on whatever space they've determined. Up front, we do have a couple of samples. So Exhibit 1 is the program webpage. So this would be the first landing page, so if it was blasted out on social media, the link would go directly here. And the top portion has all of the information, as well as the link to fill out the form. And then the grayed out area are dropdown menus, which would be, who should display the All Are Welcome symbol, which is essentially anyone who's interested and feels strongly about supporting this particular community, and where to display the All Are Welcome symbol, and what are you agreeing to when posting the All Are Welcome symbol in your space? That way, people aren't just signing up for something, that they are not fully aware of what they are agreeing to. That there is more than just the symbol, that they're agreeing to take the action items towards what the symbol actually represents, and then what does LGBTQ+ represent? Just to make sure that even the bare bones of the program are represented as well. The symbol that the commission decided to go with is presented for you tonight. And the participation request form, it looks a little daunting up on the screen, but it's not as bad as it seems, I promise. The first paragraph at the top is just a simple restatement of the purpose. So that way, again, they understand what they're signing up for. And then general information on the organization. And this will allow us to do a couple of things. One, to understand who we are, who is enrolling in the program, and who we send the symbol off to, right? Because they're actually going to be mailed the symbol, as well as a digital copy in their email address. And then on the webpage, there would be a subpage for LGBTQ+ resources. So this would be, in addition, this would be to serve as both the community that the program is intended to serve, as well as the businesses that they have a further understanding of how they can better support the community. Should council approve the program tonight, it would have a soft launch in April with about 10 to 15 businesses and community groups, with the goal of generating community support and receive feedback prior to the full launch to the general public. The idea behind it is that a lot of the concerns, or any background support that they can provide prior to the full launch, could be worked out prior. So, for example, if someone has concerns over the logistics of the program, and they want to share it with additional organizations, but they, they have a few kind of things in the back of their mind that they need to work out with staff prior, now would be, in April would be the time that staff would, staff and the Here Commission would work with them to work out those kinks. And that way, in June of 2024, anyone who logs onto the page should be able to readily access that information without any hiccups. The ending date and evaluation. So there's not currently, it's not currently designed to have a sunset. Counsel, should council decide to approve it, of course, that, that could be set. But the idea is that it rolls year after year, and is a somewhat self-sustaining program. So there would be an initial hard push for the program, and then hopefully, through word of mouth, it kind of perpetuates itself. However, after the year mark, staff would come back with a number of metrics to measure the program. Obviously, there are only certain things that we will be collecting, as far as concrete data is concerned. But we will be collecting the number of participating organizations, the informal responses from the San Gabriel community. For example, if something is posted on social media, or if someone does a private comment through social media, or an email, or word of mouth, those are all things that we can collect throughout that year process. So if it's either positive or negative, it can be brought back to the council for review. And then a formal survey would be sent out to the participating agencies. So that way, we can, for those that might be a bit more quiet about their, their opinions, we can get it in a more formal format for you. And for the fiscal impact, should council approve the program, additional funds would be, would need to be allocated from the general fund in the amount of $1,500. And this would cover the cost of developing marketing, informal, excuse me, marketing and informational materials, program supplies, and development of the educational video. Current staffing levels would be sufficient in order to develop the, develop and implement the All Are Welcome Program. The staff's recommendation is the City Council to approve the All Are Welcome Program by adoption of Resolution Number 24-05, and direct staff to begin implementing the program alternatives. So should the City Council not wish to approve the staff recommendation, the following options are available. Send the item back to the Here Commission with requested amendments to the program. Request that staff work with the Here Commission to develop a different program in support of the LGBTQ+ community. And finally, other options that the City Council determines after discussing the item. Be happy to answer any questions.
Matthew, do we have any factual questions to clarify the report? That's where I'm in Chaka.
Let me start with Edward, who's tentatively, attentively back there. I had a quick question that Matthew mentioned. Can our employees put any kind of symbol or logo in their cubicles right now? Is there anything preventing it? I can see if it's violent or criminal oriented, but if they wanted to put, whether it's Stop API Hate, or, you know, something relating to the LGBTQ, can they do that right now?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I probably will need to get back to you with a more definitive answer, but everything will come down to really judgment. So employees are encouraged to, you know, decorate and/or make their workspace as personable as possible, without crossing that line. That would be poor judgment, and could be construed as hurtful or hateful speech. So anytime that someone wants to champion a cause, obviously, that would be taken into consideration as to whether or not it could create a hostile environment for other, other employees. So the, the, the more specific answer to your question would be, I would have to really look at that and determine whether or not some types of speech would be prohibited, whereas others wouldn't.
So something like this, would you, would you have to have some kind of approval process? Or this falls under acceptable judgment? I don't, I'm just asking what would happen?
That's a great question. So something like this, I would encourage that the city would adopt something like this as a blanket statement for the city to support. Not necessarily an individual statement, but really a city statement. So if the city wanted to approve and, and support the All Are Welcome Program, then we can do that, just as we're asking our local businesses to adopt and approve the program for their businesses. So I think we can do that as an organization.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Yeah, because I'm thinking like, something as simple as, you know, the dais. Are they, you know, if we don't put that symbol there, does it mean we're not supporting the community? I mean, it starts going to, I'm going to the extreme, obviously, but I've seen it where something that is very, it doesn't seem to be harmful, I guess. I don't know if that's the right word. But if we don't all do it, then all of a sudden, we get targeted. And so I just wanted to know what the rules were, first of all, for employees. If an employee wants to put something on their desk, you know, can they do it right now, whether it's a mug, or a flag, or whatever the case may be? So even if we do approve this, then it would still have to continue on some type of general acceptance, and the council would have to initiate that or approve it?
I think it would be an administrative policy internally.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And then I have some clarifying questions here. Mark, are there any other cities of our size, I know the bigger cities have something similar, but there's cities of our size, doing this program or something similar to it?
I would defer to Matthew. I'm not familiar with any cities in our vicinity that are doing that program.
So unfortunately, there's none of our size that have, that I can use as an example. The city of Pasadena, the Public Health Department does have a very similar program. They go by a different name. It's a Safe Zone Training and a Safe Zone Program. So more in alignment with kind of how it was started in Washington. A little truer to that, to that program, and much more straightforward to that program. There are other cities, like the city of Monterey Park, that offers support to the LGBTQ+ community through the Pride Parade, but not through this type of program.
Thank you, Matthew. And then my, my next question is, we haven't really done a survey yet to get feedback, is my understanding. It was something that was brainstormed through the Here Commission. But I guess in my mind, you know, we should first have an evaluation. As opposed to putting a program, then doing an evaluation, why don't we just try to get a survey and see if there's even a need for it? Was there, because I know the Here Commission had a survey of some sort, but I don't remember this being part of it.
Sure. So the All Are Welcome Program, or this type of program, wasn't included in their survey at the time. One of the responses that they did receive from their, their kind of hefty survey that they did was more programs in support of the LGBTQ+ community. They did also provide a Pride booth, a booth in support of Pride Month during the Surf's Up event. And they did survey people on the logo and the program, the general gist of the program. And they, they did receive positive support at that time, but there was no formal survey done.
Okay, thank you. And then one last question. So why was LGBTQ selected versus, you know, I'm part of 211 LA, and so we have the Stop the Hate Campaign, which includes, you know, API, LGBTQ. I mean, it's just a wider net. This one just seems so narrow. Was there a reason for that? Why didn't we just say Stop the Hate, period?
Sure. So I think, from my understanding, based off of the direction from the Here Commission, is, was, they were listening to what was received in the, in the survey results. And so they were, they were really focusing on this particular community based off of that.
Okay, because I think my, my understanding, and I believe it applies to San Gabriel. I mean, Stop the Hate really started, I think, with our API community. I know those numbers are real. Actually, they're probably underreported. The numbers are much greater. And then from there, they, they continued on. You know, whether you're black or Hispanic, women, I mean, there's just, it's all encompassing. So I just found that a little unusual that LGBTQ was so focused for our city. But thank you for your explanation, and I do have questions, but I will leave them for deliberation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other clarifying questions, council? Vice Mayor Wu.
Thank you, Mayor. Matthew, thank you so much for your presentation. My question here is, as did the, the title shows here is, for a budget increase of 1,500. My question here is, as did the, the title shows here is, for a budget increase of 1,500. So that means we already have a budget there. Is that right?
No. So the line item budget lies within the Community Services Department, which is for a variety of other programs within the city. But, so it would be an increase to that line item budget, but there's no current budget for this specific program.
So the reason this topic will bring to the council, because this is something related to the budget increase.
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. And is it a one-time, or that will be like, like every year that will be 1,500?
Sure. So unfortunately, I can't give you an exact cost estimate of what you would be incurring year after year, but it would not be 1,500 every year. Most likely, it would be in the range of 500 to maybe 750, because the majority of the cost would be as if it needs a refresh to the video of terminology changes, or in printing additional stickers or symbols that would need to be distributed. But there's not a ton of upkeep cost to this program.
See. And it shows the program is not expected to have an end date. So, but you do have a date for like a review, how this program works, if this is like a running pretty well, or they probably need to adjust. So is it six months or a year?
Sure. So it's set to be a year from the date that it's approved by council.
I see. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other questions, clarifying questions? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. Do we have any public comment on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We have a comment from Chassidy Jennings Nunez, MD, Here Commission Chairperson. And it reads as follows. To the city council members, leadership and residents, city manager, city attorney, congratulations on a very successful Lunar New Year celebration. Events sponsored and supported by our city government that help San Gabriel to create spaces and programming, that provide places for people to celebrate their shared culture, allow others to learn and appreciate the traditions of other groups of people in our community, and that demonstrate to visitors from other cities, states, and countries that San Gabriel welcomes people of Asian descent are incredible. The same is true for events that celebrate Latino culture. The SG City Government has continued to build on existing programs that support inclusion and celebrate diversity and tolerance. The Here Commission has been tasked with advising on policies and recommending ways for the city government to encourage appreciation, respect, inclusivity, and acceptance of all people that live and work in San Gabriel, as well as those who visit. While we hope that every business would treat all customers with the same high levels of appreciation and service, it is a fact that some groups, especially those in the LGBTQ community, have been specifically targeted for discrimination and exclusion from service, or encounter hostile and subpar levels of service from some business owners. We understand that private, private business owners may have the right to restrict some services to members of the LGBTQ+ community on moral or religious objections. The majority of businesses who are willing and eager to provide excellent and equal service to everyone who enters their establishment should be identified. The All Are Welcome program the Here Commission proposes is not mandatory, does not have a financial cost to the business, but will hopefully result in an increase in visibility and patronage for the business owner. The Here Commission strongly recommends that our city government set the example by participating and displaying decals in the entrances of City Hall, the Mission Playhouse, the Community Services Department, the Public Works Department, and the SGPD and SGFD. Private business will follow your lead, and the city government will live up to its mission statement to create a city that will stand out as a vibrant, inclusive, and inviting place to live, work, shop, and play. That concludes the comment, and our first speaker is Andrew.
Good evening again. Denise Munchak brought up a good point about kind of like more inclusive, right, the kind of erase the hate, I like to say, instead of, you know. But my question, I have a couple of questions about this, is the, the video presentation that is going to be produced, who will approve that? Will the city council be approving that once it's produced, or, I mean, how would that be? Am I going to ask questions right now? Can I?
Yeah, yeah. This is an agenda item, so we can respond.
Yeah.
So that would, I'd leave, I would defer to staff. I believe Mark, Mark's staff would approve that. It's not something that goes to council level. If there was a problem with it, then it could potentially be raised to the council level, but typically, staff would be approving that.
Okay. So, so for the staff, I just want to remind everybody, I don't, if everyone recalls back in August 18th of last year, there was a lady, Laura Ann Carlton, up in Lake Arrowhead, was killed for displaying a pride flag. And so I kind of got, I kind of, you know, I go to the Here Commission meetings, and, you know, originally, it was Safe Space was what they were promoting, and then it became All Are Welcome. And, and then soon later, this tragedy happened where this lady was killed. And I did ask the chair, just personally, outside of the commission, you know, what are people to do if they encounter something where people are coming aggressively? And she mentioned, well, just call the police. You know, they have to call the police. And I thought about it, and, you know, it's going to take the police five minutes to get to a business typically, right? And a lot can happen in those five minutes. And so what came to mind was, when they produced this video, it would be nice if they have something there that would kind of direct those that, you know, the, the business owners, whatever, that are going to, are going to be displaying this, maybe how to react, or what to do in the case of someone coming aggressively, maybe to, you know, kind of how to just, you know, lower the tension, or just, just something on the video that would kind of address what happens when people come with hate, actually come with some hatred towards the, you know, welcome all program, you know, All Are Welcome program. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Some good ideas. Any other comments? Anyone else in the audience that would like to address counsel? Seeing none, I will close public comment on this item. It's now time for a council discussion and deliberation. Would you like to start? Oh, is that?
Is that for general?
Is that for this item?
Yeah.
Okay. If it's for general, we have a second. Council deliberation and discussion? Anyone want to start?
I guess.
Vice Mayor Chaka?
Okay. I'll just continue on with my frame of thought here. I guess for me, it's just such a personal choice, and our, you know, when I read this, I felt like it was more for businesses, even the city. But I think businesses already have so many challenges taking place. This could be a backlash, you know? If you don't display the sign, then that means you're not an ally. It could go both ways. It concerns me, you know? I feel like somehow, as a city, we're trying to enforce it. It's not very welcoming. It just doesn't feel welcoming to me. And, you know, I feel the same way regarding the flag, you know? The only flag we should have is our, well, these flags here. But I just don't think it's the city, unless there's, you know, criminal situation, of course, but, you know, I know of one business was very, very, who took this upon themselves and put signs that were very direct, but the business owner made that choice. And, you know, if he got backlash, he didn't care, and, you know, he went on. That was how he wanted to conduct his business. But I, it just, I feel very uncomfortable about having to force people to have these stickers. I don't like the fact that it's so focused on just LGBTQ, when there's so many other groups out there that are feeling the hate. So whether you want to erase it or stop it, I think we should just be much more inclusive. And then just the logo itself, I'm just wondering, well, you can just nod your head, Matthew, but have we shown that logo, for example, to the mission? I mean, with the bell, as a Catholic, I'm, you know, proud of that. You know, the first thing I think of is, okay, how's this going to come across to our neighbors across the street? You know, have we shown this to them? You know, the bell? I know we use the bell for our logo, but that's another issue. But this bell, this new bell with all the colors, have we shown that to them at all?
We have not shown it to them directly.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I'm all in, I mean, I, like I said, I'm an ally for LGBTQ, but I'm also very supportive of our, of our API that's going through so much right now. The numbers keep climbing, and we all know it's, you know, underreported. There's other groups, blacks, Hispanics, women. There's so many groups out there that I would want something much more inclusive. If we're really going to welcome, let's be inclusive. I do like the alternatives, and again, you know, I love to hear from my colleagues, but some of the alternatives I thought about is, you know, we could still have a site, but the site would have resources for, for all sorts of, you know, other kinds of hates. You know, we, again, LGBTQ API, we can look at Stop the Hate, or Stop the Hate California also, not just for the region. But we can provide the resources, we can provide at our events, have a booth there to provide those type of resources. La Casa is actually going to have a community resource fair. We're going to have lots of booths there. That's a possibility. AYC is always having a booth for the Stop the Hate. But I'd rather provide resources than dictate to people that you have to use this little sticker, and the sticker will tell you that you're an ally. I just, I can't subscribe to something like that. I think, again, it's a very personal choice. But, you know, and then in the agenda, it says here, you know, San Gabriel will stand out as a vibrant, inclusive, and inviting place to live, work, shop, and play. We are that already, and the sticker, this logo, whatever you want to call it, isn't going to change that. If anything, I think I can, I can safely say, I think a lot of our businesses might feel kind of, you know, feeling like it's being forced upon them, even though they could be allies. So I would vote no to this, and, but I do want to provide resources and maybe have it come back. The money is not the issue. $1,500 is not the issue at all, you know? If we need to spend the money to create a great website, to provide some really helpful handouts, we can have it tailored to San Gabriel. But again, we have, you know, through 211, which is down the street, there are just so many different possibilities that are already out there. There's no reason for us to have to reinvent anything. But if we want something that says San Gabriel, I guess we could. But I just don't think this is, this, this particular program, as it's presented right now, is something I can, I can stand by. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member comment? Delaboration, discussion? Counselor Ding?
Yeah. I, I, for the, first of all, I, yeah, Councilmember Menchenka mentioned that, okay, this is specified as some special group, LGBTQ. Yeah, I know the minority, we need to take care of them, right? Same thing, okay. But the program, we called it All Are Welcome program. If we call it All Are Welcome, we should be considered like API hate, right? Women's hate, Latinos hate, it's a lot of hate situation. So how can we, like, if we call All Are Welcome, so maybe similar, like, when we defined the Here Commission, so what's the mission, what's the, they wanted to do, we include it, we also, the wording is include all the minority group, even new immigration, even undocumented the immigration. You know, it's, it's, it's on a community you happen to hate, you know? So how can we, like, we just want, I think it's better having more diversity, okay? It's include all the different kind of the minority group together. Maybe it's, it's a good symbol to, to moving forward. So it's, it's thanks to the Here Commission to consider about it. It's, it's really helpful, but I think it's not just a narrowed down specified group, because your name already called it All, All Are Care, Welcome, right? So it's better, like, more, more definition, so maybe, I think maybe, hopefully, for maybe let's have to, or Here Commission discuss, so how can we do the, really care all different kind, different kind of the group people? We really need to stop, stop the hate, right? If community, we, it's, it's really important, if we want, if we want a safety, we first of all, let's stop hate. The most, if, like, some criminal things happen, it's because of the hate. So how can we to stop that? No, we should be zero tolerance any hate, you know? So that's my, yeah, comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Wu.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, I think that the bell is really cute design. I personally like the bell a lot, but I, I think this is a program that is very, I would say this is more advanced, because it's, it's saying like, All Are Welcome. And I agree with my colleagues, and when we say All Are Welcome, we would like to make it a little bit like, when we have a mission, a vision, that we should really include more. It's not exclusive for a certain group, but this is, I mean, this is just like a council member, Menchenka, said, this is more like preference, it's more personal. But when I see that every time I got email, for example, from one of our city's hotel, the manager, the staff, when I email, it will show LGBTQ plus friendly. And that is a good sign that showing they are a friendly environment provided to a particular group, LGBTQ, which is wonderful. But with the city to endorse a logo or a program, I would like to see something is more broader. It's not just one, but we can have some other bells, we can have panda painted on this, we can have a calligraphy. That is a symbol that will be showing the, you know, everyone that this is a community, it's really inclusive, very creative, that we are able to get every different kind of voices. But this is for everyone, having fun here, enjoying their life here, be respected here. So when we have the program, I would say, we may consider to have even higher budget, but this is more inclusive for all people. And we can have that, this is a good start. We can have other program. We can have people that say, well, API hate issue has been long issues in our community. How we can just make this one become, we support this concept. We would like to support those API who work hard here, and also they would like to pay back, contribute back to the community. That is a spiritual things, but it's, it's really a good sign that we are starting from LGBTQ, and also, any other group that we would like to support. The people's voice can bring it to the city. We have a website, we have the sticker, and we accept that these, you know, the Here Commission doing great job on this, and I think that they are capable to include some other groups together, and I would like to see that. So that's my comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor Chan?
Thought about this, and I do agree with my colleagues, that I, I noticed that words have meaning, and when we have a program that's called All Are Welcome, but then the symbol is specifically just to support one group, and again, as my colleagues have said, this is not about just the $1,500 of money, but it's the message that the city sends out to the rest of the world. Yeah, I would agree with my colleagues that if we are going to have a program called All Are Welcome, I'd like to see a broader base and more inclusive base of support for all kinds of issues and tolerance for, for, for multiple populations, not just necessarily one population. So that's, that's where I am right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have some of the same thoughts on this. Back in 2018, we did our Safe City Resolution. I remember at that time, my comment on that was that we should draft the best document that we could. We had a lot of public comment, had a lot of emotion at the time. And I think my stance here is the same. We need to draft the best document we can. And like our councilmembers have said here, if we're going to have an, you know, something that includes everybody, it should include everybody. This is a safe city for everybody. And I think my thoughts on this are the same, or similar, not exactly the same, but very similar to, I agree with the concept that we should be inviting and welcoming to everybody. And we should be anti-hate and do everything we can to make sure people know that, put it out there. We discourage, you know, hateful comments, hateful, you know, whatever. So something like this program, I think it does, at the same time, make the right statement, but we're focusing on one group, not all groups. So I think that's where we need to really go back, tell the here commission, let's rethink this and make the program broader. I think that's where I sit on this. I hope that's clear. Okay.
So I think maybe just a staff recommendation, it's alternative recommendation number one.
So I think if we're not taking action, we don't want to give a, I'm assuming I'll talk to city attorney and city manager. We wouldn't want to take a motion on this because then we're directing the here exactly what to do. I think we just want to have staff send this back to the here commission.
Okay.
Or a broader net. And just listen to what the council has said and come back to us with another proposal.
Today, today don't vote, just?
Yeah, we wouldn't need a vote on this. We would, I wouldn't call for a vote unless someone feels the need to make a motion. I think we just direct staff, bring it back with a broader program.
Okay.
Mayor? Mark, I saw you, you know, writing your notes diligently. Was there any other clarification? Because maybe I didn't say it clearly, but I mean, I like the bell, but it just has, it's kind of loaded. It has a lot of meaning, that bell. So it's a cute bell, but it's loaded with a lot there. And I agreed with, I think Matthew also mentioned a video, doing a video. If my colleagues agree, I mean, that would be great to do a video also. What that looks like, I don't know, but I'm sure you guys will come up with something or the here commission will come up with something. But I just wanted, so you don't need anything more from us, right?
We don't.
Or the attorney? Because I know the attorney had a few comments.
Yeah, I, the only thing that I wanted to clarify, because I heard a couple of different things, so to make sure that we're sending the same message, is the direction to be looking for the broader aspect of this program to here commission or to staff? In other words, is the council wishing the here commission to take this up and talk about it some more? Or are you directing staff to be doing anything?
My understanding is the here commission, because that's where this initiated. So our direction will be back to the commission because they're representing us on this issue.
Right. That's my understanding also.
Yeah, agree. And then I just wanted, I hope you don't mind if I share this with my colleagues, but Martin had shared with me that when he read the initial report, there was quite a few he had to, paragraphs he had to remove because it was, yeah. It wasn't appropriate, let's just say. So I want to make sure that Martin, you know, looks at everything carefully, to make sure we're not doing anything that's illegal or just, yeah.
Yeah, of course, we should have staff oversight and staff
Yeah, yeah.
participation, but ultimately, the program should originate in the here.
Just to be clear, there weren't things in the staff report that were improper or, I started making comments and I caught myself saying, that's not a legal opinion. Those were comments that were better left for
But maybe
council to
Well, I guess what I'm leading to is making sure that you get to look at it when the here commission looks at it. So the here commission doesn't get blindsided and say, well, we said this, why doesn't it include it? Maybe you look at what they produce, so they're at least aware of it. Because I think there could be some ill feelings there that, you know, they recommend something and all of a sudden, there's so many, because they just don't know, you know, that it's not proper, or whatever the case may be. So I just think it's important for you to work with the here commission too. I don't, do we have an attorney assigned to the here commission? I don't remember. No, okay. So it's just, good old Matthew, that handles the here commission situation, okay.
That's right. Any questions or concerns we have, we bring them directly to the attorney's office. And then before it comes to council for a policy decision, the attorney's office reviews it.
Could I ask Matthew? So Matthew, would you feel comfortable handling it that way? Make sure attorneys look at it? Because I want the here commission to understand that this is not completely free-flowing and there's parameters that we have to abide by also as a city. And I just think it would just be, just be respectful to our here commission and to yourself, because I know you've put a lot of time. And this is great work, it's just not quite.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah. Do you have any comments or anything that you wanted to give back to us as a council for us to consider?
No, that's perfect. I appreciate all of the feedback. We'll certainly recap everything to the here commission. I'm sure they'll put together another proposal. We'll go through the, essentially, this similar process where it'll go for approval to the city attorney and Mark and Rebecca before it reaches council.
Okay. Thank you for all your work.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, yeah, I'd like to thank staff as well. I know there's a lot that goes into every one of these presentations, so thank you. Next item, please.
Public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council, please give your speaker's request card to the clerk.
All right, do we have any electronic public comment? Nothing? Do we have anybody in the member of the audience that would like to address council?
Omar, this is your moment now.
He stood up early.
Good evening, council members. My name is Omar Gagos, and I'm the vice principal of Misslawn School and West California Academy of Urban Design in Pine Street. So we're coming, and this is our neighbor across the street. Our concern is homeless encampment, property damage. So there's a fence that's been broken, a chain link fence. There's half naked people walking back and forth. So our cameras have caught a lot. There's syringes and trash. Also, you've cleaned up and your private property as well. So we want to have an environment that's safe for our children. That's our main concern. So we have some evidence and pictures to showcase, you guys. So we're wondering if there is a contingent plan, let's say this increase, or, you know, some people don't think that there is an issue or a problem. But we've seen this increase and perhaps even, you know, a homeless encampment growing along with other kinds of diseases and things like that, that would, you know, make our business also vulnerable. If you wanted to add anything. So this is basically Yeah, so we wanted to propose to see if they could create a gate instead of a chain link fence, just so that way there's more safety and protection in our community.
Yeah, I'll have our city manager address because as it's not an agendized item, council can't comment, but our staff can.
So as Mayor Harrington mentioned, because this is not on the agenda, we can't respond to you tonight. Council has seen the photographs that you have given us. We will work with our police department to go out and look at that site. I know our public works department puts that fence together quite often. But the council's not ignoring you, they just aren't allowed because it's not an agendized item. They're not allowed to respond to you tonight. So we will put something together.
Well, thank you so much. And we wanted also to thank the police department because when we did call them, they did come quickly and they, you know, evacuated them. So thank you.
You're very welcome. You're very welcome. And when we go out there, just want everybody to know that we send our social services folks out there and try to provide all sorts of services to folks, to try to give them opportunities to have alternatives to those situations. So we'll continue to try to do that and see if we can make the situation better.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, do you have any other members of the public that'd like to address council? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Next is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, so I'll keep it very brief, but just a huge shout out to all the staff who made Lunar New Year so successful. Our folks worked for months ahead of time, as you all know, because you're involved in it as well. And then the day of, we had for both days, PD, fire, public works, community services, code, every department, almost extremely every department was out there making this a successful event. So thanks to you. What a great team we have to make that work so well with almost zero problems.
Thank you. Next is council comments and conference or meeting reports. Would you like to begin?
I'll go first.
Vice Mayor Wu.
Thank you, Mayor. And as Mark mentioned, that I really appreciate, to extend my heartfelt appreciation to my colleagues and also city staff, everyone played a role making the Lunar Lantern Festival a success. And especially, I have heard a lot of community comments that they are so happy to see the presence of our PD and of our department. It's just a very good compliment to, for ensuring the community felt safe to participate this event. And also, I have heard something about the complaints for parking. But I think we are committed to find better solutions to minimize the impact for the next event, like, big event like this. And additionally, I would like to, I had the pleasure to attend the Serapemist International Lantern with councilmember Menchenka, city manager Mark, and executive assistant Nancy. Well, the event is called One Moment in Time, it's highlighting the history of Serapemist International from 1933 to 2023, which is 90 years old. That is, they have a special occasion marked 90 years of their community services and support the program of women and kids. And I must also address a concerning incident that occurred last night. A pedestrian was critically injured after being hit by two cars, hit and run and while crossing the street at the area of San Gabriel Boulevard and Valley Boulevard. This incident underscores that urgent needs for our police department and parking enforcement to step up efforts in curbing illegal crossing and the parking violations. The increase of the street vendors that who often park curbsides to sell produce, food, and beverages, that has led a crowded area and highlighting the street safety risk. So it's, I think we should address this issue to prevent a further accident and ensure the safety of our community. So that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Wu. Who would like to give next comments? I'll call in.
I can, if you want to go in order.
Oh, again, you can do that too, go left or right.
Well, I didn't want to steal Councilmember Ding's thunder, but I guess I'll do a little bit of it. I too wanted to thank our vice mayor and our councilmember Ding for providing such an amazing event. You know, I wrote here, you know, the year of the dragon is a time to be bold, brave, and brilliant. And you guys really brought it to San Gabriel, to have a two-day affair. For those of us who've been kind of, who've grown up in this area, I mean, I haven't seen anything like that since the Mission used to do, the carnivals and the parades and all that. I mean, it was just so wonderful to have almost 30,000 people come to our city to see what we can provide. I really enjoyed the petting zoo that had the llamas. I haven't seen the llama since I was in Peru. But what a unique petting zoo. The food vendors were wonderful. I had my awafasca, dragon fruit awafasca, along with my bao, pork bao buns. It was just great diversity of food also. And then the entertainment, I only got to see a little bit of the entertainment because not only did I, the first day I was more of just kind of viewing it. The second day, I actually sat at the booth, La Casa booth, and got to see it from a different perspective. But our entertainment was great. I really enjoyed the youth. I understand that maybe we need to kind of monitor it a little better, but from what I saw, we had some youngsters that were dancing, doing hip hop, and then we had others that were singing in multiple languages. It was just such a nice, it was a family event. I saw people with families there, you know, the carnival rides. I didn't get on the carnival ride, but I just haven't seen that for such a long time. So I was, I was just really, really pleased, and I just want to thank both of you again for bringing that to staff, to our police, our fire that were there. And, you know, the first year is always the toughest. For those of us who've done events like Cinco de Mayo, you know, the first year was really difficult. But we do learn. We debrief and we'll do better next time. And so obviously, we always welcome constructive feedback, and so well appreciated. The other announcement I wanted to make is for the Kiwanis Club, we're having a tour of the Mission Playhouse on Thursday at 11:30. Everyone is welcome. Our Mission Playhouse was built in 1927. It's on the National Registry. It's almost 100 years old. And it's a great opportunity to just showcase it, not only to our members, but we also have our inner club, Kiwanis Club, meaning we have clubs in Pasadena and Rosemead and Temple City. And so some of them are planning to come, so it's a good way to also promote our playhouse. It is not an auditorium. It is a playhouse. I keep telling people, don't call it an auditorium. And then we do have some events coming up for our police, and I don't have all the dates here, but we have the Talk of the Town for our chief, and I believe it's this Saturday chief, at the Sheraton from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. Is that correct? Okay. So if you want to see the chief and talk to him. And then we also have our community academy. And I'm trying to find it here and I can't find it, but that's coming up. So it's a great opportunity to learn more about what our police do, kind of have that firsthand experience. And the classes start in March, so there's still plenty of time. But please check their, their social media, or you can go to our website. I think it was up here at some point. But please consider participating. Anyone I've ever talked to, and this is for the last 10 years, or maybe it was less than that, everyone's always said, what a wonderful program, and they gained so much from it. So hoping we get a good turnout again. And that was all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Chaka.
Blood drive too. Our police are having a blood drive, but that's 28th of February. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Ding?
All right, okay. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it's, first of all, really thanks to community service, Rebecca, and with our, the partner, KAZN 1300. It's, yeah, it's a good partnership together and have the two days event. And definitely, I want to thank the PD, Fire Department, Public Work, and Community Service. I think plus the PIO and the Administration Office, Mark to leadership, to make this happen. It's our first year. It's two days event, and it's really meaningful for the Chinese community because we put on like two festivals together. One is the Lunar New Year, the festival, and Lunar January 15, called the Latin Festival together. It's a lot of cultural to the presentation. Yeah, and I agree, Andrew says we need some, like a translation to the English, so maybe for the next year. So we want, working on that. But any, like, I love Any, like, I love to hear a lot of the feedback. You have the good comments, it's good. If you have bad comments, still welcome, too. We can improve for the next year, right? It's really bringing a lot of people, I think conservative estimate, like maybe I hear about 30,000. If more, like aggressive, they say probably have 50,000 people to attend it. So, I, from my knowledge, they almost have near to the, everything probably near to the 200 vendor, okay? And have the like, around 30, the vendor, it's, they have the food, or restaurant food, or like some pre-packed food, too. And for my, I think Saturday, I from the, like, 9:00 to 2:30, I saw the order, like, especially for all the food vendor, it's average, every food vendor have like more than 10 people waiting for it. So that's meaning foods that are very delicious, smell good, too, you know? So, and I also saw the stage, you have the like ATF, they do the like Chinese folk dancing. It's a lot of kids, wear the different fashion in China. They really good the presentation, and especially, I saw that even, like, people watch the, watch the entertainment, it's on the folk dancing, until like 2:30 or when I leave it. It's all the chair, the full of the chair, and there's a lot of people standing there. That's meaning they crowded, not just go to the inside, the parking lot, to see the vendor, okay? But also, they watch the entertainment. It's pretty good. It's amazing. So, this year, it's a good design, but I suggest maybe we can have the more, like, nonprofit organization, use the, we close the street, it's a mission district, there still have a lot of space, maybe for the next year, we can even like here commission, it's really encourage you for the mental health. Maybe we can use the this opportunity to help the mental health. Even, even I saw that our San Gabriel Library, maybe they can participate to have the kids welcome to the, to our library, too, you know? So, yeah, it's, I, my comments a lot, but I'm excited, it's a really good event. And then, I have the, I have a chance to attend the, our Sheraton. They have, I got invited, vice mayor to, it's for the Chinese Lunar New Year, the celebration. It's wonderful, they have the inside, the lobby have the really good decoration, and also have a lot of Latin, too. Maybe we can, we can learning from them, and we can more variety the Latin, okay? And the, another one, it's, I'm really honored, receive the honorary from supervisor, head of stories. I'm the one of 10 honorary for the individual. So, it's representative, the title, it's a council member, so.
Did. You're really the only one.
I'm only elected, the honorary. So, I, I think I want this honorary, it's given to all of our San Gabriel City. That's meaning our San Gabriel City doing a good job, and help, especially help our API, the community. Okay, so, let me see, okay. Then, another one, okay, I picked up before, I forgot. It's very important, I encourage our community, especially our Asia community, they usually, they don't come out of vote, but this is a primary, March 5th. I encourage, if you want a safety, go out of vote. It's very important, okay? You think about who you want to vote, you can base on your choice, okay? But you have to have, go out of vote, March 5th. But you can, you can send out the mailing, but I think, I received it already. You can mail out, too, or, you know, if you, March 5th, you don't have time, you can early vote, right? It's on, start from this Saturday, right? So have the, yeah. So, come now vote, and keep our community safety. Happy New Year. Okay, thank you. Just use Chinese, okay? 我们都有一个好的社区谢谢大家
Thank you.
Councilman Ding, in accordance with Andrew's comment, can you translate for us?
Okay.
At every event, every public event, please translate what you just said.
Okay.
The city provider.
Just a couple things from me. On February 13th, I attended the San Gabriel Chamber, Tasty Tuesday. It's our monthly networking event, and this time it was, for the first time, it was at our own Luna's Restaurant, just next door. So, it was a great event, and the food was very good. And then, as my colleagues have been saying, this past Saturday and Sunday, the San Gabriel Lunar New Year Lantern Festival, I attended both days, and I brought a bunch of friends. It was a great event. So, thank you to Rebecca and her staff, and all the city staff for making it a great event. Look forward to need even better event next year, and like my colleagues have been saying, we, sometimes we have to experience it, and at least try, in order to learn some lessons. And even though it was a great event, there's a couple things that we learned, I guess that we can do a little better, again, with Andrew, and great suggestion on the translation, so that everything's in English, even when we have speakers in other languages. And then, we're going to look into improving the parking situation, because I heard from some attendees, some minor complaints about that. And also, another thing that we might look into next year is having a kind of legend or overall map of the different vendors, because I did have an attendee come up to me and ask where to find a specific booth, and I didn't know, but luckily, thank you to Rebecca, she helped that attendee find whatever booth she was looking for. So, great, thank you. Appreciate all of you, and that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Chan. I'd like to also echo my fellow council members, the event was excellent. Appreciate all of the effort and time that goes in, and there's always going to be, you know, little hiccups here and there. I think parking is, when you tick up the main parking lot, that's always going to be an issue. I think, overall, I mean, we think of the scale of it, if you were at a different venue, like if you go to any event, there's always going to be some walking. I mean, it's just going to be part of it. If you go to a, like if you go to SoFi Stadium, bring your hiking shoes. Here, it's not that far, it's the San Gabriel High School. I mean, they had some good park, close parking, so it's not terrible, it's a couple blocks. One suggestion I had was to really incorporate either a shuttle van, or like the RSG, our ride, for the people that aren't able to make that walk, we should have some sort of help, let's plan that next year, shuttle. I guess, we have the facilities, if we could just, I had a few people that informed me, that would be a really good service if we did have at least a shuttle for priority to people that are not able to make the walk as easily. So I think that was a learning experience as well. I do appreciate all the effort that went into the planning and the execution of the event. I think it went off quite well. So, other than that, I have no comments. I will adjourn tonight's meeting at 7:53 p.m. The next city council meeting will hold March 5th at 6:30 p.m.